To the flag. The United States of America and to the Republic.
It stands one nation, God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Has everybody read the minutes from last month except Peter?
I'll make a motion that be approved as presented, Ken speaking.
I'll second it. I'll second it, Joe.
All right, all in favor?
Aye, Ken.
Aye.
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 Aye, John.
Is that everyone?
Sean.
Yeah, you came in too?
Aye, yes.
Okay. I forgot to get on the agenda, but it worked out. Mr. Goller is not going to be up this evening. He hasn't got his drawings back yet.
Well, Ed, what I'm wishing on Mr. Goller is that I get a permission to redate them as of this meeting because they were approved, but they were never signed because we didn't have a Malar and so on. We can't find any plans. So I just want to get a motion. And so when he gets them in a couple of days, I'll sign and stamp them if he could file them.
Can I get a motion for that, please?
Well, can I make that into a motion, Amy?
Yes.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Everybody blink. It's okay. Oh, as I said before, under new business, Mr. Omen did not. He got back to me, but he hasn't got any drawings yet. So we'll jump right into the Ten Mile River Scout Camp. Under new business. Who is going to do the presentation? Amador?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is Will Frank. I'm the local counsel for the project. But Amador, Amador is going to do the presentation. I'd just like to make a quick couple of remarks and let everyone who's here from the scouts and and our team quickly introduce themselves so they know, so everybody knows who's who. Like I said, I'm Will Frank. I'm from Blue Steen Shapiro over in Goshen. I want to thank the chairman and everyone in the town planning board for helping us get this on the agenda. As you know, the the Boy Scouts are involved in a transaction where they're going to be conveying portions of their property along the the Ten Mile River. And as we may have previously mentioned, and I've also had some discussions with Mr. Klein. You know, we're, we're here for some subdivision application, pre-application for this meeting tonight. We're on something of a truncated timetable. The bulk of the property is going to be conveyed to the Conservation Fund of the State of New York. We're talking about a great deal of open space. I'm not going to say too much more. Unfortunately, my voice is kind of shot from COVID. So, but I would like to ask, I know Dick Davies is here and Chris is here, if they could just quickly introduce themselves. And Tom, I see is here as part of the project. And then I'll gladly turn it over to Amador for the specifics. So Dick, why don't you introduce yourself?
Sure. Yeah, Dick Davies, I'm the chief executive officer of the Greater New York Councils, serving the five boroughs of New York City. So just want to also thank you for putting us on the agenda this evening and it's probably about as much as you need from me, but I'm available to answer any questions as we go through the you know, the presentation tonight.
And Chris, you're here tonight. It's Chris on. Yep, there's Chris.
Yep. Good evening, everyone. I'm Chris Warner. I'm the deputy scout executive for the Greater New York Councils. It's a pleasure to be here and we appreciate your having this meeting.
Okay. And who else? We have Thomas here. Tom, you want to say a quick hello?
Yes, I'm Tom Duffus with the Conservation Fund.
Okay, thanks, Tom. And is there anybody else? I think that's it. So as Mr. Chairman, as you noted, Amador is here. He's, he's been handling the submissions. He is from, he'll tell you, he's from Felon's or Engineering. And he's been quarterbacking the local submissions as well as sending the submissions to Sullivan County under 239M, which has already been done with the preliminary sketches. So I'll thank you for letting me talk for a minute. And now I'll send it over to Amador for the specifics of our of our applications this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. And thank you, Mr. Chairman, for having us on tonight. I have my screen up. So would you like me to share my screen? Or do you have the the plans out and I'll talk through them?
I'm not letting you share your screen in one second. And if anything, you're missing, I do have everything that was emailed as well. You should be able to share your screen now.
Okay, share. All right. Do you see the Ten Mile River Scout Camp, a lot subdivision? All right, so this parcel one is 7,153 acres. And we're asking for an eight lot subdivision, starting down at the Delaware River here. We're creating a parcel two, about eight acres for river access. And next to that is this church parking lot. The Baptist Church has been parking on scout property for some time. And parcel three will grant them or convey the place they're parking for their parking lot. Parcel four would be this Route 23 house. So this is Route 23. And this would be a ranger house, about eight acres. Parcel five is the headquarters for Ten Mile River. And that's about 195 acres. Parcel six is Camp Aqua Hunger on Half Moon Lake. And that's 315 acres, plus or minus. Parcel seven is the Fish Fry House. So that's about 1.3 acres and the scouts will be keeping that. As well as Trout Pond, parcel eight, about 157 acres. Any questions on there? So going in order of lot numbers, lot two, this is the river access. Let me blow this up a little bit. So here's the Delaware River. Lot two has 680 foot of river frontage, and that would be about eight acres. Lot three. So the Baptist Church is here, here's New York 97. And here's their parking area, which is on scout lands. And lot three would convey 0.19 acres to be used for parking only. Lot four is a Route 23 house. So 23 is here. This is about an eight acre parcel with about 300 foot of frontage. And an existing dwelling there. So this will be used by the scouts. Lot five is about that. So this is the headquarters on Blind Pond Road. Crystal Lake Road. Did someone have a question?
I was gonna say, hey, the headquarters is Crystal Lake Road.
Yes, here's Crystal Lake Road on the the left of the map. And this is about 195 acres. To be retained by the scouts. Six is Camp Aqua Hunger on Half Moon Lake. So this is about 115 acres. And this will be kept by the scouts for their program. Here's Crystal Lake Road, 26. Here's lot seven. So this is also in Crystal Lake Road. And this house would be retained by the scouts. And then Trout Pond is lot eight. So this is at the northern ten of Tustin line. They also own lands in the town of Ethel. And we're talking with BJ Gettle up there. So that's our eight lots. Do you have any questions there?
Amador, do you own any of the lots land around the Fish Fry House? Or has that already been sold off?
Yes, the Fish Fry House is lot seven, this is this Fish Fry House here.
Right.
So we currently own that.
Right. But do you own the lands around it? You did it one time, but you sold some there years ago.
Yeah, the reputed owner here is Fantasy. And we own on the other side of Crystal Lake Road.
Right. So there's no way that you can make that lot any bigger because that's all you own on that side of the road, correct?
Correct. Yeah, there's no way to make this lot bigger besides buying one of these adjoining properties. And any other questions?
Perhaps either Dick or Amador can, or Tom, could just clarify what the purpose of the intended transaction with the Conservation Fund is, just so everyone understands exactly what's happening here, whether Amador or Dick, you want to talk about that just very briefly for the board?
Yeah, sure, Will. Yeah, the you may know that the National Boy Scout Organization, it's been in the papers, is going through a bankruptcy process, which luckily is moving along fairly well. And the real purpose of the bankruptcy is to is to address a number of sexual abuse claims largely from the 1970s and before. So it's, it's a historic problem that the scouts have had before we started putting in more Australian stress serious youth protection policies in the late 80s. And as part of the bankruptcy settlement, every local Boy Scout Council, there are 250 in the country, will be making a contribution to the settlement trust that will, we believe, fairly compensate victims for the past abuse. And so we, I know if we approached them or they approached us, the Conservation Fund and Tom can talk, it's a national nonprofit that conserves open space, if I can use that term. And so for us, it was a real ideal transaction in that you know, it's, we, we're very concerned about maintaining sort of the, the integrity of the Ten Mile River property, if you will, and and keeping it wild and not developed. That's very important to, I mean, to the scouts as a conservation organization. And so the Conservation Fund is a partner who will ultimately provide financing for us, will own it for several years and with the ultimate goal of transferring this to the state of New York as what I guess would be a new state for us, so that would preserve the, you know, the wild nature of Ten Mile River permanently and from protected from development. So that's the way we're looking at it. I don't know if, Tom, you want to give anything from your perspective?
No, you pretty much covered there, Dick.
Yeah, that, that's, that's kind of what we want to, we want to convey to the planning board as well. And I think it's important to note that the purpose for us being in front of you this evening and moving forward is not to be selling off this property for the maximum dollars to to get development rights. This is going to, the intention is to preserve the open space, as Dick and Tom said, and not, not create lots that are going to be built on for that type of, for that type of development. So that's, that's really the purpose. That's the nature of the transat, the underlying transaction. And I thought that was important for the board to hear. Thank you.
And then just one thing too. I mean, what's complicated this is we have, we have carved out the property that we need to run our current camping operations. And we think that will preserve a lot of capacity for additional scouts as well. So you know, some of these, you know, carving out these different pieces of property, it's been, it's been complex, but it allows us to maintain our operation as it currently exists, which is why, you know, Amador is in front of you with these proposals tonight.
Right, along with, and along with that, the Conservation Fund not not wanting to take certain properties that there's already buildings on that are going to be retained by the scouts for their operations. Does anyone from the, from the planning board have any questions for Amador or Dick or Tom or for me at this point?
Well, BJ Gettle from Bethel brought up about buildings. From what I'm seeing, there would be very minimal buildings left on what's being transferred. Is that correct?
That is correct. And and some of them that are sort of abandoned, we are actually destroying, if that's the right word, before, before the transfer. So yes.
I have a question. So basically, at this point, it will go to the conservation. And then from there, the state's going to purchase it or is it just going to? How is that transaction happening? And is that a guarantee that it will always be, you know, put back to its natural, never, you know, sold by the state for any reason? Because sometimes things can happen, as we all know. So I was just curious, what is the guarantee on that?
This is Tom from the Conservation Fund. I think I can take that, that question. Thank you. The Conservation Fund will be a temporary owner. We'll just continue things the way they are. That the scouts have been using the property. They're going to continue to use the property under a license with us for their charitable purposes. We'll continue to manage and improve the forest and so forth. And then, you know, we will be paying for this property. Then the state of New York will create a new state forest, and we will then sell the property to the state of New York. The New York State reforestation program started in the 1930s, sort of after, after the Dust Bowl. And it's a, an effort around the state for them to acquire, own and manage timberland, forest lands for public benefit and for forests, forestry and hunting and so forth forever. This is a forever acquisition. It's very, very, very difficult for the state of New York to wiggle out of any land that has been acquired for these, these kinds of purposes. In fact, there's a state law that essentially prevents it. So once they buy it, they will, they will own it and manage it for forever. Thank you.
Thank you for answering that.
Hi, this is Sean. I have a question. So would, would this land then be accessible to the public for like hiking or any, or will there be any monitoring of that? Or will it be available for use, you know, for biking or hiking or?
So currently, the scouts use the property for their own programming, and that's going to continue under our license arrangement with the scouts, with the exception of Down By The River and the Tustin Mountain Trail. That is an area that's currently open to the public, and that will remain open to the public. Once the transfer to New York State happens, the property is, is public land and the trails and, and the forests will be accessible to the public and managed by the state, state foresters.
Okay. And will this then become a a taxable property for Tustin or not?
Yes, my understanding is that New York State Forest, they call them state reforestation areas, are a taxable parcel for almost all of the taxes. I think the, the county gets a, maybe a slight, something knocked off them, but it's for the town and and all the districts there, it's, it's a taxable parcel. So that's, that's good news. It will come on the tax roll since it's been off since 1927. So in three, four, or five years, when we convey it to the state, that'll be a good day for the town.
Hey, thank you.
How much acreage are we referring to as what's being used by, being retained in conservation for the Boy Scouts? And what's going to be eventually acquired by the state?
Well, I'd have to do the math, but 7,153 is the original acreage. 157, 30, 15, 5, 6. So about 600 acres being retained by the scouts. Leaving 6,500 plus or minus to go to the Conservation Fund.
And I'm at our, that, that number is, is in the town of Tustin. There would be additional acreage in Bethel that we're retaining.
That's right. Yes.
Yeah. So I think in, in round numbers, Ten Mile Rivers, I mean, round numbers, 12,000 acres, and we'll be keeping 2,000 in total.
Are any other issues we can clarify for the board?
I believe it's pretty well cut and dry.
Sorry, I didn't hear that, sir.
Ed, say that again?
It is muted, I think.
He wasn't muted, but he's not coming in good. He's probably got a connection again. And I did not understand him this time. Usually I do.
Yeah, me neither.
I think he said it was pretty cut and dry. That's what I got.
Yeah, before he had no objections, I know. So I'd like to say, as this is Ken, this seems to fit well with our comprehensive plan that we redid a couple of years ago. And we were concerned about keeping open space on the town. That's one of the biggest things that were desired by the town folks in the survey. And this area was an area of concern if it were to all develop. So that kind of fits in our plan to keep our town wild, finding it going possibly on the tax roll again should make everybody jump for joy because we've been carrying the scouts and 13,000 acres or whatever for a long time.
Well, I can speak for the scouts and say they appreciate it. But we, we have arrived at this point, as Dick noted. So the, the transaction that's come about with the Conservation Fund and subsequently the state really, i- if the property has to be conveyed, which it does, this is really an ideal situation for both the town, not only the town, but you know, the scouts and the Conservation Fund, because it's going to allow the scouts to continue operating and allow for conservation of open space, which is good for the town. So that's, you know, that's really it in a nutshell. And we're, you know, we're, we're eager to move forward. And there is, quite frankly, a need to move forward as quickly as we can to meet timetables of the Conservation Fund and the scouts. So we're, we're here to ask for the subdivision and ask for it to move forward as quickly as we can. Again, are there any other questions from, from the board or from you, Ken? Or I know the municipalities that I represent, and I represent several in, in Orange and, and Ulster. Open space is a priority everywhere. And some of the more densely populated places that I represent, you know, they're scrambling to preserve open space on a much more urgent basis. So I think this, this is going to be good for Tustin. We think it's going to be good for Bethel as well. We've, we've already sent the package, as I mentioned earlier, excuse me, to Sullivan County Planning. They're, they're looking at it. So we're, we're prepared to move quickly to the next step under your code for whatever process is, is deemed necessary by the planning board. We just need to move it along as quickly as we can, you know, to get you the next set of drawings to get the public hearing going and move forward and respond to any concerns.
You sent to the county. You'll also need to send to the Upper Delaware Council, if you could for us, please. Because they also review and will want to have input, and they could then get into the park service.
All right, Upper Delaware Council, do you have a contact there?
The person has just changed. So I don't know exactly. Is Upper Delaware Council on here tonight?
I don't know. No, they're not on tonight.
They should be. They usually are. But since Sharon left, I don't know. Lori Remie is the executive director, R E M I E. And
Ken and Ed, if it's Crystal, if you'd like, I'm happy to, I have an extra packet here. I'm happy to walk it across the street tomorrow.
That would be most appreciated.
Okay.
Well, it's Ken Klein. I just, I just got, I don't, I only have one semi substantive concern or issue. It's got to do with the, it's the lot that we're creating for the, for the church. And I guess my question, Ken Bane may be able to chime in on this, but we're creating a substandard lot there. And I don't know whether the county will combine that because it's divided by the highway. So if the county won't combine, either way, I think we need to have some additional notation on the map and, and some agreement that there'll be a restrictive covenant in the deed to the, to the church, that, that, this is an undeveloped lot, that it's strictly for purposes of of maintaining their, their existing parking. I don't want the future of this thing to turn into somebody claiming, you know, it's, it's, it's a legal lot for, for building purposes, because it's not. We're in a three acre zone and it's 0.19 acres.
Right.
And that area is five acres down there.
I thought that was three. I thought that was in the, I thought that, that's part of 191, 1.1, like what that's in the
Okay, that, that, most of it is three acres, but the But the south of Narrowsburg along the river to the Highland border is five acre lots.
Okay, gotcha. So that's even more of a reason.
But I was looking at that too because I had the same problem. This is Ken Bane, hoping that it'd be able to be combined. It appears that it's Tushekton Turnpike that's in between the two, which although it's not used as a public road, does wind around there. And if it is a public right of way, then they can be combined across it. If it's not and it's privately owned, then it should be conveyed too.
We, Dick, you can, Dick or Chris, you can stop me if I'm incorrect here, but I don't think there's going to be an objection that that's going to be conveyed to the church, is it not?
Right, and it needs to have a deep restriction in that it could be should be combined if at all possible.
That's what I was getting at. I don't I don't think the church is going to have an objection to to those types, either the either or scenario, whether it's going to be combined or there's a restriction running with the property. I don't think that's
Just to be clear, I mean, we're we're just giving it to the church as a courtesy. We're not we're not trying to we're not making money here. This is
Just to clean up it, it's to clean up the approach. That that makes perfect sense.
Yeah, so we'll we'll make sure that it's papered properly in the conveyance.
Will.
Yeah.
Why don't I'm just throw this out there. Why doesn't why don't you or somebody on your team reach out to Chris Knapp, who runs County Real Property Tax Services in Monticello and get his take on it? And then
Yeah, I was gonna do that.
Whether they can do a combination or not, then then we can, you know, figure out how to how to, you know, notate it on the map and and how to how to design whatever the covenant restriction might be.
Yeah.
I, as Ken Bane, approve the combinations in Tustin for Chris to do. And if he can do it, I would approve this without a problem. So you have my blessing.
Well, we'll take it. We'll definitely take we'll we'll take all the help we can get. And certainly, we will reach out to Chris and let him know the the story. And by the time we were ready, which will be very soon, to submit the next set, Amador, I'm sure we can work out a notation there depending upon what we're told by Chris.
Okay.
So procedurally, it seems to me, and I and I know I saw I saw Peter Manning's on there too. He may want to throw in his two cents, but procedural, I mean, it seems to me we've got subdivision flats that conform with the requirements of of the subdivision regulation. They've they've made the referral already for us to the county for the two thirty-nine, which the county's entitled to thirty days, and hopefully they'll turn that around by the time we can get to another meeting. I think the thing to do is is to is to go through and and complete part two with the or adopt part two if it's proposed with the answers and and take a determination of significance under seeker and schedule the thing for a public hearing.
That's our request. We are, as I mentioned earlier, we are on quite the truncated timetable.
So unless unless Peter or Ed and Ken have any any issue with that, I, you know, I I don't
Now, you sent us the part one of the seeker is filled out. I guess we should need to read through it so that everybody agrees with the answers and we can discuss any if we have them. Anybody have a problem with that? Now, am I coming through well for volume for you?
Yeah, perfectly.
Okay, then, since I have it in front of me, name or action of the project is Ten Mile River Subdivision. Location lists the SBL nineteen dash one dash one point one between Corford Road and Mount Hill Turnpike, County Route twenty-three. Brief description on lot nineteen one point one point one will be subdivided into six lots. And I don't know now, did you say six here and eight elsewhere because the other ones aren't on twenty-three?
So there's there's two other lots, seven A dash one dash one and seven B dash one dash six. So those are the other two lots.
Okay, well, I guess if I'd read a little further, it will all be explained. Sorry about that.
Okay.
Let's see. Parking access for existing church on Kushektin Turnpike, lot number three, Route twenty-three House and Mount Hill Turnpike, lot number four. Headquarters at Turnpike Lot Lot Number Five and Trap Pine at Crystal Lake Road, Lot Number Eight. Lot for lots seven A dash one dash one and seven A dash one dash six. Two lots will be combined into one for the camp Aqua Hunger and Half Moon Lake at Crystal Lake Road, Lot Six, with a lot line change. For any other additional acreage from either of these lots will be added to nineteen dash one dash one point one, which is the neighboring lot. For lot nineteen for lot seven B dash one dash six will be subdivided into two lots. Original plus one lot for the Fish Fry House, Lot Seven, with the lot line change. And any additional acreage from either of these lots will be added on to nineteen dash one dash one point one, which is the neighboring lot. All right, break time here. Is that agreeable with everybody? Everybody understands?
Yes.
Okay. Name of the Board Scouts of America, Greater New York Council's phone number and email and address. The question one, does the proposed action only involve the legislation, adoption of a plan, local law, ordinance, administrative rule or regulation? And that was a no. Does the proposed action require a permit, approval or funding from any other government agency? And that's a yes. Okay, approval from the Town of Tustin Planning Board is what you're answering. I don't know if they were referring to us, but anybody else that you know of? Nothing to do with the state at this time, correct?
Correct.
Do we need do we need to add in there? Sign off from Sullivan County Planning?
No, I think that just happens as part of our procedure. We have to do through the two thirty-nine municipal law. We have to submit to them.
Right, yeah, some some municipalities like to have it in there, but if not, that's fine. Thank you.
Well, I can write it in if you want to give me the wording you'd like.
No, it's I I know, and I just want to make sure that we have everything as complete as you want it. I don't need it in there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Total acreage of the site of the proposed action, six hundred eighty-five, to be physically disturbed, zero. Total acreage of the project, seven thousand four hundred fifty-six. And they checked that land uses forest. That sounds good. Is the proposed action a permitted use under the zoning regulation? Yes. Consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan? Yes. Is the proposed action consistent with the predominant character of the existing built or natural landscape? Yes. Is the site of the proposed action located in or does it adjoin a state listed critical environmental area? You put no. I might know there might be some spots, but generally it's a very big place.
That's a CEA is has to be a specifically designated area by the state. There is none in Sullivan County.
Okay.
Critical environmental area. There, I mean, I I get the point where it has a generic concept, so they would concede you can sort a lot of property in the town of Tustin is critically is environmentally critical. But CEA is a term of art and it's 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 an area designated by the state, and it's not that.
Okay. Will the proposed action result in substantial increase in traffic to the above present levels? No. Are public transportation services available at and near the site of the proposed action? No. Are any pedestrian accommodations or bicycle routes available on or near the site of the proposed action? You said no, even though Route ninety-seven is a state bicycle route, but very little of the proposed action. Does the proposed action meet or exceed the state energy code requirements? Yes. Will the proposed action connect to existing private public water? Yes. Will the proposed action connect to existing wastewater utilities? You said no. Now, I have a problem with saying yes in one and no in the other. If you have water, it becomes wastewater. So you have your private wastewater things at this point, I would think.
Yes, we do.
Be a yes.
So is that existing wastewater facilities, be it public or private?
That says I would understand it.
So that's a yes then.
And then we will say, oh, no, we do have to describe. Okay, no. What does anyone else feel? Should we change it to a yes? Going once, getting changed.
Yes, you can change. I agree.
Okay.
Good, Kenny.
Does the project site contain or is it substantially contiguous to a building archaeological site or district where it's listed in National or State Register of Historic Places? Or has been determined by the Commission of the New York State Office of Park Recreation and Historic Preservation to be eligible for listing on the State Register of Historic Places? And you said yes. Is the project site or any portion of it located in or adjacent to an area designated as sensitive for archaeological sites of the New York State Historic Preservation Office Archaeological Site Inventory? You said yes.
At the one area where they do the
Yeah, and that's kind of where I was going before up at the before it stopped in talk, I was thinking of archaeological instead of C I C. Does any portion of the site of the proposed action and lands adjoining the proposed action contain wetlands or other water bodies regulated by federal, state or local agency? Yes. Would the proposed action physically alter and encroach into an existing wetland or water body? No. If I can get the page changed. Okay. Identify the typical habitats types that occur on or likely to be found in the project site. And you checked forest. That's probably all we need. There's a lot of wetlands in there, but they're in the forest, so.
Yes.
Efficient. Does the site of the proposed action contain any species of animal or associated habitats listed by the state or federal government as threatened or endangered? Yes. Is the project site located in a hundred year flood plain? Yes. Will the proposed action create stormwater discharge either from the point or non-point sources? No. Does the proposed action include construction or any other activities that would result in impoundment of water or other liquids, retention pond, waste lagoon, dam? And it's a no. Has the site of the proposed action or adjoining property been located? The location of an active or closed solid waste management facility? No. Has the site of the proposed action or adjoining property been subject to remediation ongoing or completed for hazardous waste? No. And Amador signed it, so we're good with that part. Anybody wish to pose any questions at this time? I put you all asleep. Now, we're simply so speak. Will the proposed action result in the change in the use or intensity of the use of land? A no or a small impact? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No or small impact? Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical
That's okay, let me go. So they can follow you then.
You guys all set?
Hold on one second.
And we're just trying to pull up a part two so everybody can follow along with you.
It comes right up under New York State Short Environmentalist Assessments for Part Two for me. Ready to go on? Will the proposed action result in adverse change in an existing level? There you go, of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking or walkway? No or small impact? Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy? And if it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? I don't think there's much change in energy at this point. Will the proposed action impact existing public, private water supplies or public or private water treatment utilities? And again, no, no impact or change that I can notice. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historical, archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources? No or small impact? Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora or fauna? No or small impact? Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems? No or small impact? Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No or small impact? I've checked all no or small impact. Does anybody have any problems with that?
No.
Because
No.
Use that. We're going to use that information now to do part three. And we're going to check the second box of part three, which is in the second page of your part two. Check this box if you have determined based on the information and analysis above and any supporting documentation that the proposed action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts. So we'll check that box. And we never declared ourselves lead agency, but it appears we're doing that. So at this point
Ken, before you take it, before you have a motion to approve the part three and next decade, why don't somebody make a motion for the Town of Tustin Planning Board to act as lead agency for the project?
That's exactly what I was saying. Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. I was about to ask somebody about that. Thank you.
Okay, so I have a motion. I'll put a motion on the floor that the Town of Tustin Planning Board act as the lead agency.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor? Mary?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Ed? I think Ed's gone incommunicado. Peter?
Aye.
I'm Ken. I an aye. Did I miss anyone? Because I don't have my list in front of me.
I'm Sean.
John, I'm sorry, John and Sean.
And I'm an aye.
Okay, so I think we're all ayes at this point. We're good with that. At this point, I'll be yes.
Ken, do you have to get the motion for part one and part two?
We're looking at it, coming up with it.
Okay.
I think that's all part of this one. Because when we answer this, check this box that we haven't found anything in part two, I think that's what we're doing. Okay, I put a motion on the floor that we've completed part two and in part three, we're checking the box that we haven't determined on based on that information analysis, any supporting documentation that the proposed action will result in a significant adverse environmental impacts.
I'll second that.
Does 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 someone want to, and this is up to you, Ken Klein? There was an amendment to the part one that was submitted by the applicant. Do you want to just make a notation in your motion?
That was the case, yeah.
Yeah, great.
Got that, Amy?
Yeah.
Okay. Since I have the paper in front of me and Ed isn't talking to us at the moment, I will sign off if you give me this motion as responsible officer to deputy chairman. So we have the motion. We have a second on it to find no problems here and So we have the motion. We have a second on it to find no problems here and approve this. How about vote? Mary?
I.
Barry?
I.
Joe?
I.
John?
I.
Peter?
I.
Did I forget the last time that I forgot?
John.
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 I'm sorry, Jim. I'm not paying attention to you tonight. You're not pictured here in front of me.
And Sean.
Ed, are you on yet? Okay, appears we're all eyes. So I will sign the thing and we're done with the seeker. Now, does Amador or anyone need a copy of this email to them to include with the 239 or anything else?
Amador, I would like that copy.
Okay, I'll scan it later and send it to you.
Thank you.
I don't need to send part one, just part two and three, right?
That's right. Two and three.
Anybody else? Okay. So we have approved the seeker and it appears I've taken over the meeting. So next thing would be preliminary approval, I believe.
I'll make a motion to give preliminary approval for the subdivision.
Thank you, Joe.
I'll second it. It's Mary.
Thank you, Mary. Would there be any discussion on the motion to give preliminary approval that we have on the floor and seconded? In that case, let's start our vote. Joe, you're up in front of me. You want to go first?
I.
Mary?
I.
Barry?
I.
Sean?
I.
John?
I.
I'm an I and Ed's quiet. Peter?
I.
I call for everybody now. I do better when I have the list in front of me. Sorry. Okay, a motion has been approved. All eyes. At this point, we need to, I believe, set the public hearing date.
February 22nd. It's beyond Zoom, the public hearing.
Yeah, we'll have to check the date, but I think so. Hey, Will? Do you remember what day the the authority for us to continue to hold public hearings expires under the current state?
Presently, the the ability to have Zoom meetings expires on February 14th, which is a Friday. The the smart money is the smart money is that the governor is going to extend it, but you never know.
So we'll do, it can be hybrid.
You have to do a hybrid to cover it. Notice it is hybrid to cover your backside because we're not going to know the answer to that before we get these notices out.
Right. Now procedurally, do you prepare the public hearing notice or you want me to do it?
You do it.
Okay, no problem.
Crystal will put it in the paper. Correct, Crystal?
No, Amy puts it in the paper. She's the clerk for the planning board, so she gets the paper. And she should prepare it to make sure that has all the proper information, including the Zoom link, the place, the time, and all that. And then she'll email out to everyone, including yourself and your applicant.
But you.
We'll send it. We'll send it to the paper for publication. With Will, there's a mailing requirement also associated.
You're going to be responsible for the mailing requirement of all parcels within 500 feet around its full parcel.
Okay.
By the way.
That could be what?
That could be a bear because there's, I mean, look at the size of this parcel. You got it. This parent parcel.
This should not be bad at all compared to doing it in the municipality. That's where you have a lot of them.
Yeah. Now, is are we responsible for creating the list or is that something I get from the clerk?
You're responsible for creating it if all possible. It can be done.
Okay.
County website also.
You can work off the tax map and call it.
Yeah.
Sit and look at the tax map like you would have to do.
Well, that's what we're, that's what that's our job. That's fine. Amador and I will. We will create the list.
Okay, and remember that there's certified return receipt requested. We want the receipts back and the certified coupons that you mailed it.
Yes, sir.
Now, this 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 also adjoins this project area also joins the town of Bethel. Yes?
Correct.
Yes.
So we have to send a, we have to send a copy of the public hearing notice to the town of Bethel as well.
Correct.
Yep.
And you might, I don't know if you are required to send it to those across the river from to that township or not.
I will check the code on that.
Yeah. And it will only be one anyway, so.
Listen, we'd rather, we we intend to err on the side of caution. We don't want to screw anything up procedurally. So if we have to send a couple extra. What's that?
You can't give too much notice, right, Will?
Precisely. If we have to send a few extra notices, it's, you know, in the big picture, in the big picture, it's fine.
And and I'm, I got the subdivision regs out in front of me and it doesn't differentiate. So if it's within 500 feet of the property, whether it's, whether it's in across the river in Pennsylvania, it doesn't make a distinction. So I think the safest that is to give everybody that's within 500 feet of the of the of the site.
Absolutely.
Will do.
And I would recommend that we, that you mail a copy of that notice also to the UDC.
To what?
Mail a copy of it to the to the Upper Delaware Council as well. If things happen. Use actions without their knowledge.
Okay, so just so I'm dividing up responsibilities properly. So now it's been decided that Tustin is going to prepare the public hearing notice to make sure all the Zoom links and all are in there?
Yes.
Okay, you're going to prepare the public hearing notice and we'll get a copy of it from you when it's ready so we can include it with our mailing and all of that good stuff.
Okay. One thing we have not said is a time yet. We kind of lazed over that. This probably won't be an extremely long public hearing. Would 15 minutes be adequate? We usually give five minutes, but it's a big person.
Yeah, I mean, we're going to the public hearing. Amador is going to give the same type of presentation they did this evening, and it can certainly be boiled down to 15 minutes or so.
Well, let's start at 7:15 then with the public hearing. If you go into the 7:30 meeting time, it's not a big deal.
Okay.
Okay.
So do you need to make a formal motion to set the public hearing or did you already do that?
I don't know. I'm lost. I think maybe we did not make it.
We did not, Kenny.
No.
Well, all right.
I'll make the motion for the public hearing to start at 7:15 PM on February 22nd.
I'll second that motion.
At this time, it'll be a hybrid meeting unless the executive order cancel public hearing via Zoom and that's when you won't be able to hold public comment via Zoom.
But I left you there for a minute. Do we have the motion done?
We got a second. We.
Nobody voted.
Okay. Are we, you finished with discussion? Like I said, I got lost. I didn't hear it.
I made the motion. We got Joe to second it and then we have to ask all in favor.
Okay.
Let's take a call. I.
Barry?
I.
Joe?
I.
Hang on.
I.
Peter?
I.
Ken, yes. Ed, are you back?
Ed, yes.
Okay, Ed's saying yes. You're back with us. Good.
Amy and Crystal unmuted me.
Oh, okay. You heard what's going on. That's good. Anybody thinking anything else?
I just asked a question. I'm sorry.
Can you finish the meeting first, John?
Sean, say I.
I.
Okay, Sean, I missed again.
May I ask a question? Sorry to interrupt.
Sure.
Yes, I have. So assuming the hearing, unless it's a positive response, does it, does it come back before this board for a final approval or what? What is the next step after the hearing?
If everything goes well at the hearing, and even if it doesn't, then it will go before the board as old business at that meeting on February 22nd.
Oh, I see. So this is right before the next board meeting, in other words.
It is.
All right, I, yeah. Which is just the reason I'm a little nervous is the federal bankruptcy sort of court is starting their hearings in late February as well. And if there's a positive outcome, our needs for the cash sort of become immediate. So I'm just trying to get the timetable set in my head. So the 22nd, if all goes well with this, with this body, that that would work for us. So thank you for that.
Yeah, and what we're looking at right now looks quite favorable, so.
Yeah, I know. I appreciate that.
And and we we completely understand that it's not final and we appreciate you saying that, but we know how the process works. The other question I have, regardless of whether it's a hybrid meeting, is it the board's preference that myself and Amador appear in person? Do you care? Does it matter? What's your pleasure?
You can allow for that. You can allow for them to to appear on behalf of the applicants. They can, they can participate remotely.
Yeah. I'm just asking if you want, if you want us to come up in person, we will, whatever you want to do.
And certainly the Boy Scouts would be happy to join you as well if if it's appropriate.
Yeah, and we can, we can, we can approach that question as the date nears, I suppose. But we're just, for purposes of tonight, I'll just throw it out there. If you want us to come up, even if Zoom is continued by the governor and remote meetings are permitted, if it's the board's preference for some of us to be up there, we'll, we'll certainly join you in person if necessary.
Well, you have plots that need to be signed that night.
We certainly if that's a possibility, we'll work towards doing that. Yeah.
Because if it's approved, we often sign and if you're there, then we can sign it and have it over with. Otherwise, we have problems catching up with each other. You'll end up coming to my house sometime or something.
Well, I think that, Amador, I think we just got our question answered.
Now, I think we're bringing, how many copies would we need to bring for the town?
We want to keep at least one. Being it's a combined subdivision, we can probably get by with the one. I don't think we need one for each parcel, separate one. But it will be a set of sort of like we got of several pages, I would think.
Right. And so we'll, we'll coordinate with you and and the staff to to bring up whatever you need. And we're also, obviously, you can't make a formal approval until there's 239M approval as well. So we will, we will work closely with with county planning and with your permission, we'll describe to them how the meeting went tonight. If that's okay.
That's, that's fine. And normally they, their turnaround time is very good. Because they know they're working at the 30 day limit. So and you already gave it, gave it to them ahead of time. So.
Yeah, and we're, and we're going to also make contact with Chris Knapp and get, and we're going to get his take on how he wants to approach the church situation. So we have our homework to do and we will, I assure you, we're all going to get it done quickly.
Well, the other thing is when you send your copies to the Upper Delaware Council.
Uh huh.
Give them a note that they, we want it back, you know, within 30 days also.
Indeed, we will do that.
They drag your feet over there, something crazy.
Well, we'll. Okay, we'll have to pester. If we have to pester them a little bit without irritating them, we'll, we'll try and do it diplomatically.
But irritate them.
That was my comment. That was my comment. It looks like I'm not muted. Having worked through the town's comprehensive plan, it went to UDC, then it went to the park service, and it seems like an attorney. So I don't know the legal jurisdiction. If you need that, sign off or whatever it is. But as Ed said correctly, that's the one to keep an eye on.
Thank you, Peter.
We have been noticing that they send them back after what the state law would allow us and the subdivision would be approved without any action. Because they, they send them back after 62 days or whatever, and it would automatically approve. So they're not working within the parameters that we're given by law.
Nope. But I appreciate what what Peter said, and I think it makes sense.
This is good for.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll do everything we can.
I have a question. This is Amador. So on the notices, do you want the green cards back or will you take a certified list?
Both. We want the the white thing that you get when you mail it and the green card.
Okay, will do.
And Ken, tomorrow, when I bring Crystal, town clerk, when I walk over the plans, I have two sets here. So I'll bring one for the UDC to keep and one for them to give to the park service. And I'll also give them the notice for the public hearing as well.
Nice.
And then you have the other things too, except by part of the seeker. So I should email you this part two also to take to them because I think they want that.
Okay.
Yeah, we need to give that to county planning as well.
So if I send it to Amador and to Crystal, we're good?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll forward to my team.
Yeah, anybody else wants to tell me now because we could just email them all at once. Ed, did are you back on?
Think so.
What's your, I think we're done with this. What's your next order of business on the meeting?
I believe.
That was it.
It fell off.
Moving to paper. I believe we're looking for someone to give us an adjournment.
They were looking for someone to adjourn the meeting.
The motion to adjourn the meeting. And I would like to thank Peter for his first meeting and welcome to the club.
Thank you.
Okay, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
I.
I.